It'll be up on air.
Good morning, Judge. Good afternoon, Judge.
Good morning. All right, Chambers County. County, Chambers County Commissioners Court, excuse me. Been a long week. Chambers County Commission Court come to order. This is Friday the 16th of April twenty twenty one. Made a schedule for three thirty P M. It's now three thirty four P M. We have a couple items on the agenda. First, I have two public comments. Austin, if you let Ms. Hessler in.
She's in. Ms. Hessler, if you can hear us, star six on mute, please.
Rachel, if you can hear me, star six to unmute. There you go.
Hello.
Hey, all right. You have three minutes to make your citizen, ma'am. You may proceed.
Actually, I'd like to reserve my time until we're on the actual agenda items.
Okay, well, I mean, we're going right to it. So.
Perfect.
Good. So either way, I mean, we're there. If you'd like to go to it, just go ahead. I can read the agenda and go stay where you are. All right, so we're going to. We have two items under the special, the special called meeting agenda. The approval resolution authorizing publication notice of intention to issue combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation and to discuss and consider awarding bid on West Side Complex project. Okay, we're there. Yeah, three minutes, ma'am.
Okay, so the first question I have on the agenda item number one is just the intent behind offering this as a certificate of obligation rather than a general obligation bond.
Okay, you make your citizens comments. We'll make notes of your questions and we'll get into the items. We'll answer them. So go ahead and make your citizens comment.
Okay, and then.
Fine, too.
And after that, it's going to be on agenda item number two. And I just wanted to ask about the proposal for bids when that was made available and when we can see the other bids as well.
Hey, can anybody hear me?
I can hear you, Tommy. Okay, Rachel, repeat that second question.
I don't have any sound.
Oh, you can't hear me? Hang on just a minute. What's Tommy's number? Twenty six oh one? All right, can the rest of you hear Mark, Jimmy, Billy? All right, I got Tommy on speaker on the phone. Austin's in his computer. If you don't mind, Rachel, will you repeat your two questions so Commissioner Hammond can hear them?
Sure. My second question was when the proposal for bids was made available? And then also, when will you make available the bids that you did receive on this project?
Okay, thank you. Repeat the first question because he didn't hear it either. Can you hear okay?
Tommy?
Yeah, I hear you. I can hear her.
Okay, go ahead. We'll repeat the questions in just a minute.
Okay, and then the first question was just about why we're offering this as a certificate of obligation instead of a general obligation bond.
Okay, we got it.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any luck?
No, it's taken a little bit longer.
Okay. All right, Tommy, as long as you can hear me, I'll repeat those two questions. Lauren, do you write those questions down? Here, let me, let me see them. I need to repeat them. So Tommy can hear them. All right. First question. Number one. Why a C O versus general obligation bond? Second question. When the proposal for bids went out? And when will the bid be received on this project? Is that? Okay, and we've already received the bids and.
Who, who, who else bid on it? They wanted to see all the bids, I think, Judge.
Yeah, and we'll ask, I'm sure it's an agenda fact when we did it. When Jeff gets on, he can answer those questions. And I guess the, the second question. Do you have any luck?
No.
Okay. Now you can hear me. Okay, the second question. Read it one more time, Lauren. What'd you do with it? Read it.
When are the bids on this project going to be?
Now, the second question. The timing, I mean, the way I see it, and you can, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but the timing for getting a C O, a bond done versus a certificate of obligation is the reason to go out for C Os. We're going to lose the bid that we have currently. And we'll have to rebid it. And also, those road projects are very important to get done. Anybody else want to jump in on that?
Yes, Judge, also on the bid on the West Side. But years down the construction industry, from steel costs, lumber costs, everything else, if we were to put this same package out to bid next month, without question, based on what the industry is telling us and what the legislature is telling us on material costs, there's no way that number is not going to, to go up tremendously and advantage of, of this bid that we have, very important, Judge.
Yeah, well, I mean, they're telling us we got a, our, our folks and also the architects tell us we got a bid on this project. So. All right, anybody else want to weigh in on that question?
I, I judge, if I can.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I think part of the concern is, and I think what Ms. Heffler was alluding to is I think she was alluding to, when did we start this process of bidding this community, the West Side Complex? And we've been knowing we need to do this infrastructure work on the West Side, which, I mean, I totally agree, we need to get it done because we've got a lot of congestion over and everything. But I think the concern is that that possibly, we've been knowing about this here for a while. We've been going out looking at this West Side Complex. I don't know the complete timeframe on how long it is. It's a year or so before COVID or whatever. I think the, the concern is that, well, we've known about it this long to put it on a general bond, obligation bond, and went out to the voters because when you're going for almost fifty million dollars, everybody wants to have a say in it. And I, I think that's just the concern from what I know.
No, and I understand that. And I actually, you know, until we actually went out for bids, I think it was a big question mark on how much do you actually need? And, and I can understand those concerns. And hopefully that they will have a say because there's, there is a process. And you'll see the calendar for getting these seals done. It just doesn't, you don't vote on it today and it gets funded tomorrow. So. All right, anyone else? Fargo to the next citizen comment.
No, I just, one thing, I mean, we, we've been working on this and trying to get all these numbers solidified. So we would know what to present to the citizens. I mean, that's, this is all part of the process right here, I think, so.
Well, I can tell you from the road standpoint, I've been working on it since I've been in office and you know, it's a project we should have done a long time ago, but we just now got engineering and stuff to a point, you know, to get the budget numbers that we really have something solid to work with.
Thanks, sir. All right, this is a comment is from Chris Johnston on, in Beach City. And his comment is to the, to the Commissioners Court of Chambers County, Texas, as a citizen of Commissioner Court Precinct Four of Chambers County. I'd like to voice my support of the West Side Complex project and the issuance of tax and revenue certificates of obligations in order to fund such a project. This complex will be a tremendous benefit to taxpayers and youth of Chambers County respectfully, Christian Johnston. Lauren, there's that. Okay, you want to let Jeff in? Austin.
Judge, that was the only two public comments we had.
That was the only two public comments we had. Any, any of the rest of you would like to comment on anything else that you've received personally? And I, yeah, I may have received some emails. But I'm behind on checking emails. So I really hadn't had much other public comments. So.
I'm sorry, Judge.
Hello?
This is Rachel.
Yes, ma'am. Let me see. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm sorry. I had one more thing if you would allow me to.
I will allow you and then we're going, we're going to put you back and wait.
Okay. My last thing is just that on the agenda today is to award the bid. And I'm just, I was just wondering about how that, how that can happen if we still have that waiting period for the public notice and whatnot.
Okay, and that'll be, that'll be addressed during this court meeting. So it, it will be addressed. And it, it already has gone to court and, and it's in the court records, those bids.
Right.
Low bidder and all that, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
All right, Sheriff's on with us. He, he, he called me earlier and said he'd like to speak. So Sheriff, go ahead before we get into a presentation by Jeff.
Muted, Sheriff.
Okay. You're muted, Brian.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Well, I, here's what I, Judge, Commissioners, one thing I wanted to say to y'all is it's my understanding that in this package and infrastructure that you're trying to move forward with, as I have spoken, I know to the judge and I've spoken to a couple of you as Commissioners about the desire to hope that whatever we do build on the West Side is a hurricane rated community building that can obviously be used for community events. But I don't have to tell you all that we are constantly having stronger and stronger hurricanes. They seem to be more and more frequent. And the last few that have hit the Gulf Coast have ramped themselves up, been pretty soft, easy category, say, one, two, maybe up to a three, but by the time they were hit, landfall, they were pushing four and fives. That's very problematic.
Rest of you here, Mark, Jimmy, Billy. All right, I got Tommy on speaker on the phone. Austin's in his computer. If you don't mind, Rachel, will you repeat your two questions so Commissioner Hammond can hear them?
Sure. My second question was when the proposal for bids was made available? And then also, when will you make available the bids that you did receive on this project?
Okay, thank you. Repeat the first question because he didn't hear it either. Can you hear okay? Tommy?
Yeah, I hear you. I can hear her.
Okay, go ahead. We'll repeat the questions just a minute.
Okay, and then the first question was just about why we're offering this as a certificate of obligation instead of a general obligation bond?
Okay, we got it.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any luck?
Now it's taking a little bit longer.
Okay. All right, Tommy, as long as you can hear me, I'll repeat those two questions. Lauren, do you write those questions down? Here, let me see them. I need to repeat them. So Tommy can hear them. All right, first question. Number one. Why a CO versus general obligation bond? Second question. When the proposal for bids went out? And when will the bid be received on this project? Is that? Okay, and we've already received the bids and.
Who are, who are, who are bid on it? They wanted to see all the bids, I think, Judge?
Yeah, and we'll ask, I'm sure it's an agenda fact when we did it. When Jeff gets on, he can answer those questions. And I guess the second question. Do you have any luck? Now you can hear me. Okay, the second question. Read it one more time, Lauren. What'd you do with it? Read it. No, the second question. The timing, I mean, the way I see it, and you can, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but the timing for getting a CO, a bond done versus a certificate of obligation is the reason to go out for COs. We're going to lose the bid that we have currently and we'll have to rebid it. And also those road projects that are very important to get done. Anybody else want to jump in on that?
Yes, Judge, also on the bid on the West Side. But years down the construction industry, from steel costs, lumber costs, everything else, if we were to put this same package out to bid next month, without question, based on what the industry is telling us and what the legislature is telling us on material costs, there's no way that number is not going to go up tremendously and advantage of this bid that we have, very important, Judge.
Yeah, well, I mean, they're telling us, we got a, our folks and also the architects tell us, we got a bid on this project. So. All right, anybody else want to weigh in on that question?
I, Judge, if I can.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I think part of the concern is, and I think what Ms. Heffler was alluding to is, I think she was alluding to, when did we start this process of bidding this community, the West Side complex? And we've been knowing we need to do this infrastructure work on the West Side, which, I mean, I totally agree, we need to get it done because we've got a lot of congestion over and everything. But I think the concern is that that possibly, we've been knowing about this here for a while. We've been going out looking at this West Side complex. I don't know the complete timeframe on how long it is. It's a year or so before COVID or whatever. I think the concern is that, well, we've known about it this long, to put it on a general bond, obligation bond, and went out to the voters because when you're going for almost $50 million, everybody wants to have a say in it. I think that's just the concern from what I know.
No, and I understand that. And I actually, you know, until we actually went out for bids, I think it was a big question mark on how much do you actually need? And I can understand those concerns. And hopefully that they will have a say because there's, there is a process and you'll see the calendar for getting these COs done. It just doesn't, you don't vote on it today and it gets funded tomorrow, so. All right, anyone else? Fargo to the next citizen comment.
No, I just, one thing, I mean, we've been working on this and trying to get all these numbers solidified. So we would know what to present to the citizens. I mean, that's, this is all part of the process right here, I think, so.
Well, I can tell you from the road standpoint, I've been working on it since I've been in office and, you know, it's a project we should have done a long time ago, but we just now got engineering and stuff to a point, you know, to get the budget numbers that we really have something solid to work with.
Thanks, sir. All right, this is a comment is from Chris Johnston in Beach City. And his comment is to the Commissioners' Court of Chambers County, Texas, as a citizen of Commissioner Court Precinct Four of Chambers County, I'd like to voice my support of the West Side Complex project and the issuance of tax and revenue certificates of obligations in order to fund such a project. This complex will be a tremendous benefit to taxpayers and youth of Chambers County, respectfully, Chris M. Johnston. Lauren, there's that. Okay, you want to let Jeff in?
Judge, that was the only two public comments we had.
That was the only two public comments we had. Any, any of the rest of you would like to comment on anything else that you've received personally? And I, yeah, I may have received some emails, but I'm behind on checking emails, so I really hadn't had much other public comments, so.
I'm sorry, Judge.
Hello?
This is Rachel.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm sorry. I had one more thing, if you would allow me to.
I will allow you and then we're going, we're going to put you back.
Okay. My last thing is just that on the agenda today is to award the bid. And I'm just, I was just wondering about how that, how that can happen if we still have that waiting period for the public notice and whatnot.
Okay, and that'll be, that'll be addressed during this court meeting. So it will be addressed. And it already has gone to court and it's in the court records, those bids. Low bidder and all that, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, Sheriff's on with us. He called me earlier and said he'd like to speak. So Sheriff, go ahead before we get into a presentation by Jeff.
You're muted, Sheriff.
Okay.
You're muted, Brian.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Well, I, here's what I, Judge, Commissioners, one thing I wanted to say to y'all is it's my understanding that in this package and infrastructure that you're trying to move forward with, as I have spoken, I know to the judge and I've spoken to a couple of you as Commissioners, about the desire to hope that whatever we do build on the West Side is a hurricane-rated community building that can obviously be used for community events. But I don't have to tell you all that we are constantly having stronger and stronger hurricanes. They seem to be more and more frequent. And the last few that have hit the Gulf Coast have ramped themselves up, been pretty soft, easy category, say, one, two, maybe up to a three, but by the time they were hit, landfall, they were pushing four and fives. That's very problematic to me, and I know it is to you all, because by the time it's being spun up, it's too late to evacuate. Our citizens should have already evacuated regardless, once the judge makes his decisions. But we do need a place that we can put first responders. We have a place on the east side of the river. The Winnie Dome is specifically built to do those things and be able to put first responders. The state has already used it for their assistance for first responders dealing with the hurricanes that hit the east side of Texas this last year. And I, and I hope that you'll continue, whatever you do, that this, this money, and I know it's a lot more expensive to build a category four or category five building. I'm sure it's up into the millions added to it, but from the long term, this county on the West Side needs it. And in particular, where you're focusing on building this, it is ideal to not only put sheriffs and fires and paramedic, but also we can include Mont Belvieu Police Department in that, that planning stage. If in fact, we end up with a three, four, or five rated hurricane that hits our, our coast that is going to impact Chambers County. So I, I commend you for what you're doing and I, I hope that you'll continue to focus on those things. I know that Commissioner Tyson and Judge Sylvia and I have spoken about it. And I, and I hope that y'all will continue to go in that direction because we do need to protect our first responders that have got to be here.
Yeah, and not only ours, but those coming in from the state and the feds. And if we have a place to house them, they will be here with boots on the ground, so.
Correct. And like I said, I know it's more money, but, but I, I promise you, we'll be glad if we build this thing and we design it in which we can house first responders and house people that are detrimental to our community from a recovery and a safety aspect. So with that being said, I appreciate everything y'all are doing.
Thanks, Sheriff. Appreciate you.
Bet.
Thank you.
Okay, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having me.
Yeah, and we probably, I know you went through the PowerPoint on Tuesday at the Commissioners' Court meeting. And I know you changed it. We tweaked it. And also, there are probably folks listening that and watching that weren't on Tuesday because the word's gotten out, which is good. We wanted to. But would you go through that presentation again, please?
I will. Just a quick question. I have some slides here for Cory Taylor and Billy. You want to start with them and then roll into me? We can go over all that new stuff as well first.
That'll be fine.
All right, let me share my screen and we will.
Yeah, because one of the things we didn't have Tuesday was any, any slides pertaining to the road projects. I'm going to let Cory sit down here. He's in my office, so he can, he worked with you, Jeff, to go through that.
One second. All right, so thank you very much for having me. My name is Jeff Chapman. I'm with PBK. Because we are looking at some stuff that we didn't talk about on Tuesday, just figured we'd start with that. So I'll turn it over to Cory. And we can begin with the, with his section of the presentation. Thanks, Cory.
All right, thanks. And I think actually, Billy, were you going to take the first couple of slides? Or do you want me to just talk about everything?
Cory, I can. It doesn't matter either way. If you want to go for it.
Oh, okay. So. All right, so the, this first one is just showing the population trend for, for Chambers County. And you could kind of see the little dots as they go up. You know, and we're obviously right there past 2020, which approaching 50,000, but you can see kind of the incline from about, looked pretty flat, sort of flat between 2013 and 2015. And then you can see the trend going up to 2020, but then if you added a dot in there at 26 to 35, you could see that it's really escalating there as it goes up. I think anybody that's driving around on the West Side, as had, as mentioned already in this conversation, that everybody sees a need. You know, Tech Dot's got a lot of projects going on right now. Unfortunately, they're all at one time. It's just leading to, you know, more congestion, I guess you could say, just because of the construction element of things, but I think anybody that is in on the West Side can see the need. They see the population going there. I mean, you know, some of the, I guess you could say, the old timers, the original Mont Belvieu group, even trying to, you know, maybe escape some of that. So that's kind of pouring over into Anawak and East Chambers a little bit as, you know, just the whole county starting to grow faster and faster. So anyway, I think you could probably go, anybody want to comment on this further before we go to the next slide? All right, Jeff, if you could hit the next one.
That's from BJ. That's just the West Side extract.
Okay.
The population. Does it have a number on there?
It's just talking about seven, seven, five, two, three. I don't, actually, I was not prepared for this slide.
No, that came from BJ.
Okay, yeah, go to the next one. Right, okay, so this just shows, so if you kind of look at the purple, which a bunch of it, it shows industry. And obviously, we've talked a lot over the last probably year about the industry growth. And of course, the issues as now industry starts to expand along Fisher Road. They have, well, and let me just say, I get a lot of questions about this because there, there seems to be a misconception that somehow the county can zone and restrict and stop the, the growth, but unlike a city where a city can do zoning and could just say, well, okay, this is, this is all now residential. The county can't do this, that. It's, this is, this is purchased, these are industrial parks, and they have the right to develop, and they're going to develop. Our, our role in this is to try and make sure that they meet the regulations as they develop. And so we have requirements for drainage. We have drainage, I mean, requirements for, you know, maybe if you, if you might have to add a turn lane, you know, you might have to expand a roadway or increase its structure so that it can handle the, the truck traffic. But we can't stop the growth. And all the elements have already been there. We've got, we've had situation already where rail has come in. We have the, the plastic plants. We have several years ago, Cedar Bio became a federal maritime highway, which really has expanded its growth and little ports have popped up along there. And of course, the big element right now is the billion-dollar Grand Parkway project. That's essentially a 50-mile completion of the Grand Parkway, all the way from the Fred Hartman Bridge up to the New Caney area. And so that's expected to open up next year. And, you know, hopefully that does draw some traffic to it. But the other thing, it's, we're already seeing is people are, you know, commercial and industry and residential homes, everything's starting to pop up along this route, and it's just going to expand even quicker. We're already busting at the seams and we need some relief. Like I said, Tech Dot's working on some projects. We're working on projects with Tech Dot. We're working with Baytown. We're working with HGAC. We're working with industry, trying to manage the growth and the development and the, the roads as best as possible. But there's no mistaking, the growth is going to continue. It's going to get worse. So how do we, how do we, we manage it? And, you know, there's been thoroughfare plans in the past. But, you know, they weren't protected with roadways and those opportunities slid past us and we've, we lost that, we lost the ability to put a thoroughfare in place. And so I guess we could talk about, go to the next slide, Jeff. Okay, so this, this is the roadway projects, kind of things that we're working on that's south of IH 10, kind of between 146 and Cove, north of 565. So as we look at this, on the right-hand side, you have the new 1409 project, which is doing real, really well. It's about a year ahead of schedule. Thank goodness, because it's, it's needed a great deal. The River Farms subdivision that's in place, homes growing out there. They, they need that relief. Lanai, when there's issues with accidents along the interstate, they have all kinds of problems, but on this, you'll see on the left-hand side, of course, we have 146. Everybody knows the issues over there. We have Kilgore Drainage, which is in this. This is a project that has been ongoing. The, that is, I'm sorry. Yeah, thanks, Judge. That is the blue on the, on the left-hand side of the screen. And as you tie, as you can see, it ties into Cedar Bio down along 146. The existing route is, is the blue lines. And it basically opens up about 540 acres of, I'm going to pop up on the screen there, 540 acres of development and the.
Cory, that's way more than 540 acres. 540 detention.
I'm sorry, 540 of detention. You're right. So there, there's some improvements, a small amount of money compared to what's been put in there to, to open that up to basically that, that larger area. And so anyway, that's one of the recommendations. We have.
So, just for a minute. So that one is a, is a private government partnership between the county and and those folks that are building up there. And 1409, back to it, it's a Tech Dot County project.
Right, okay, yeah, that's a good point. And so is what we're doing on the Kilgore Drainage, excellent point, Judge, is that we're selling detention for development. So the partnership will be able to reimburse for a, a large portion of this cost to help offset the cost of the project. And with that, with, you know, it generates tax revenue and everything else. So that's that project. Then we have the ongoing project Needle Point realignment, which has taken longer than we anticipated. We ran into some issues there, but that's coming from 565 going up to that black line. We are realigning that so that when we get done, traffic will be able to travel both north and south all the way from IH 10 down to 565 without a toll. That will be a great positive for the individuals, especially coming from Beach City area.
The small orange.
The small orange. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not spouting out the colors, but yes, and so that's that orange just north of the green line. The green line is the 565 realignment project that's ongoing now with Tech Dot. It basically goes from the railroad tracks to 99 and eventually will go from 146 to 99 and be a five-lane roadway with a railroad grade separation at the current railroad tracks that everybody loves so much. And okay, and then coming from the little orange line, the Needle Point realignment up there is asphalt. We, part of the project is the developer. So that HPP that's currently down there, they are doing the initial work as part of an agreement to construct the alignment, the base, the subgrade and the drainage portion. And then the county's going to come back and surface it. And we will surface up to IH 10, and that is in the, in the project as well. Or in the potential projects. Okay, and then just north of that, you see Kilgore widening, Kilgore extension. So currently Kilgore Parkway goes from 146 past 99. About, I don't know the distance, but about halfway between 99 and 3180. And you can see that white line there. It was recently lengthened a little bit by the industrial park within our right-of-way. And we are currently bonding that to ensure that it meets standards. Of utmost importance is extending that Kilgore extension over to 3180 and tying in. The Grand Parkway, when it gets completed in '22, will add toll gantry plazas at Kilgore ramps. So currently, there's not the freeway portion in between 10 and 565. You kind of run on the outside. And so you can see the bridges being constructed now. When it's done, you'll run up on the bridges. And then when you exit to Kilgore, you'll have to go through a toll gantry. So we see that as a big negative. The way to offset that is to extend Kilgore over to 3180 so that residents can use 3180, exit that and drive all the way over to 146. Extremely important. So the extension is critical, I believe. The widening, going from two-lane to four-lane, I think needs to happen in the future. I'm just not positive it needs to happen right now. And so that's the question marks there. That's something we need to determine. There's, there's possibility with growth of some residential, some apartments, and with other development, industry included, that it might need to be expanded to 99 at this point. But as everyone see, 3180 has handled traffic for quite some time on two lanes. It obviously has gotten to the point now where it needs that four-lane section, and that will be valued a great deal. Okay, and then the last one on this slide is the old Needle Point extension and widening. The orange represents an extension which would cross over the Seawell Canal, cross Needle Point, north-south, and then travel over to 99 through the north part of Bay 10, and then swing north of Legends Bay and tie in essentially at Lakeside on, along 3180. There's a subdivision that's planned in there now, west of 99. I'm not, we're coordinating with them and the city of Baytown on this project to ensure that it meets requirements and kind of is a good partnership, I guess you could say. I think that's critical because if we don't get over to 3180, I believe the route could disappear and we lose the capability of tying in. And we just need as much tie-in and mobility between 3180 and even beyond 146. This, this takes it to 146, but there is a project that Baytown is looking at, maybe a couple of projects that would tie in some roadways west of here, across the Cedar Bayou into 146. So we just need all that connectivity.
Don't nail down the right-of-way now. You'd have to combine houses in the future.
Right. Yeah, the, yes, the cheapest time to get this right-of-way is now. And at a minimum, we need the right-of-way. I'd like to see it go ahead and be extended and the roadway built, but anyway, we need to, we need to lock up this right-of-way. Prices are just skyrocketing on land, and it's going to get worse as development continues. Old Needle Point widening, that's another one. Over on the west side of 146, south of IH 10, where Needle Point ties in, there's going to be a large commercial development similar to the Walmart complex, which is going to generate a lot more traffic and you know, keeping off of IH 10 and keeping from going on that 146 north-south. You know, eh keeping off of IH ten and keeping from going on that one forty-six north-south. Uh having this reliever route uh would be critical. So um that's that slide. Uh any questions before I move to the next one?
Corey, I just want to make a comment on the widening of Kilgore uh to Highway ninety-nine.
Yes, sir.
KTN is tying in their roads as we speak, they're under construction. And they currently have uh four and a half million square feet of development on the ground. And they are going to expand, they're twenty-five percent complete, they're going to expand that to eighteen million square feet. And the mix of those eighteen-wheelers coming in that will be utilizing Kilgore Parkway from their driveway entrances. Over to highway ninety-nine is critical that that be widened to four lanes at that area. To keep that from mixing with the increased traffic we're putting on that road. Uh every day for residential traffic, especially once it's tied into thirty-one eighty. You know, the area between ninety-nine and thirty-one eighty, I agree, a two-lane on that should be sufficient, at least. In the near future. But I do take exception to that part on uh Kilgore Parkway between ninety-nine and one forty-six.
Billy, I I agree that uh, I mean, there is a uh. With the growth that's happening right along there, uh there, there's going to be a need quickly um for that project. Okay, Jeff, can you know, go to the next slide? Okay, and this is the section of uh projects that's north, oh, go back one, there you go. This is the Mont Bellevue area and we just wanted to kind of show you what was going on there. Of course. Uh right up and down going north-south is uh fourteen oh nine. Uh again, that's under construction now, it's about a year ahead of schedule. Uh I'm sorry, the orange from Old River Winfrey down to uh IH ten, it does extend all the way down to five sixty-five. Uh it is a two-lane with shoulders. Uh at this point, it will have a bridge that goes over IH ten. The bridge is currently uh in the process of being bid. Um the bids come in Tuesday. Uh there's currently eleven on the list, so I'm expecting to have uh pretty good uh prices. Uh we'll see how that goes, but uh anyway, that looks good. We've generated a lot of uh interest. Um other projects, oh, and the bridge, we're anticipating to be about a year. So once we get it started this summer, it should be done next summer. And uh that will be a huge reliever for traffic. Um. Okay, then we've got uh the white line, which uh comes from fourteen oh nine, uh the other one. Uh there you go, what goes up to five sixty-five, that is uh an extension of Perry, which uh Mont Bellevue's calling Gill Parkway, I believe. And uh there's a new school being built uh in there, there's some subdivisions, so already growth happening. Um also, south of that, just talking about growth, there's uh. Lakes of Champions is ex- extending uh all the way over to five sixty-five. I think they're already uh in the process of uh. Building houses and maybe selling some right now, so uh just a lot of development there.
And both of those roads go all the way from Eagle Drive to.
Yes, well, in a sort of way, yeah, and then and then the other road that you have down there is Langston. Uh to the, on the south part of the screen there. Uh that's the other white line and Langston extends from uh Lakes of Champions, kind of from the school Eagle Drive. Over to uh ninety-nine. And then uh there will be, I should have drawn this in here, but. Uh it's probably on here, but you just can't see it, but uh there's frontage roads uh in that portion along ninety-nine, which would tie uh I ten. Up to Langston, uh which will help with some mobility uh relief. And of course, ninety-nine kind of snakes through. Um on the west side of uh Mont Bellevue, up over uh five sixty-five, over one forty-six and up by Exxon. Uh going north into Liberty County.
Question.
Yeah.
Langston dead-ending into ninety-nine or is it going on to one forty-six?
It dead-ends at this point, is my understanding. I don't think. Originally, it was supposed to tie into one forty-six, but I don't think at this point, there they see a big need with the. Uh expansion of the plants and stuff that's over there. So that's my understanding.
Corey, I think that's correct, and I hadn't really thought about it until just now when you're saying this, but uh. The service roads in the highway ninety-nine does have feeder roads that would connect between Langston. And the old Needlepoint Road Extension, so that would allow traffic from Mont Bellevue. A route to get to Chambers Town Center and one forty-six. Area without getting on ninety-nine or Interstate ten or or one forty-six at that intersection of one forty-six and I ten. It would make for a much safer route coming in and out of there.
Well, um. Yeah, yeah, you could, you're you're right, yes. So with the needle, oh, I see what you're saying, old needle point extension, yes.
Yeah, I hadn't thought about that until now, but that that would connect, uh and you got, you know, free passage between those two points.
Yeah.
And anybody who keep on one forty-six is a plus.
Yes, yes, all right, next slide. Oh, is there? There you go, okay. And then. Uh this one is uh, this is just a challenge. So we've got the red on the left-hand side over there. Is one forty-six. And of course, most people are probably aware of uh. The growth of the one forty-six corridor, basically all the way past Keema. Um as they expand the freeway uh over the last ten years, they've been uh improving the freeway from. Uh probably just south of Fairmont area, up in La Porte area, all the way down. And uh now going through Keema, Seabrook, and just, it's just bringing more traffic from the Galveston, Texas City area. Uh up into Baytown even easier. Uh they get here and then now this red line is an expansion. Of the freeway from where it currently ends um all the way up to almost Massey Tompkins. Uh road. And so with the congestion along one forty-six. Uh with the continued commercial growth, with industry growth that travels back and forth to the port. There's a huge concern of uh the just continued traffic dumping into this. Non-freeway section of one forty-six. It's really a gap in the in the roadway program. Uh kind of some short-sightedness from text dot. Um I guess you could say uh along the way, which, and I'll put some uh target on me as well, just because I was uh. I was there at one time and just really didn't, I kind of missed this, I was focusing on some other elements of uh keeping the pavement together. But uh anyway, this is just a real issue and uh at this point, it's already bad out there and just trying to figure out uh. What needs to happen. So in uh I guess here a couple of years ago, just looking at what. Was trying to do with adding a safety project with the raised medians and all that. Um just trying to look at, okay, if we're doing safety, what are we going to do with mobility? Um like I said, there's the five sixty-five corridor that's out there now. It uh. It has the rail grade that's at grade now. We have a project approved uh to to go to separate that. Which will help with delay. And there's just no way that we can expand one forty-six. The way it needs to to relieve traffic. There's already forty thousand plus vehicles on that roadway um a day. And it's just uh, it that's just too much for the road. So my idea was to take one forty-six. Since they're extending extending the freeway and uh come over Cedar Bayou. Uh do a grade separation at Massey Tompkins, want it uh i- improve the bridge over Cedar Bio that would allow. To reduce flooding as it comes down uh Cedar Bayou, the 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 drainage. Um do a grade separation at uh one forty-six and at fourteen oh five. And basically bend as much of that traffic of one forty-six up that five sixty-five corridor to ninety-nine as possible. Uh trying to relieve traffic. So that's uh that's not currently in this uh. This group of projects, but it's just, just part of the overall discussion of how much traffic and how many issues and how it's going to get worse. And you know that we've got to continue to look for opportunities to. Improve wherever we can. And we're working with text out, we've had uh numerous projects with text dot with the uh. One of the commissioners from text dot with HGAC, just strategic. Doing everything we can to try to um bring uh, I guess, a partnership of uh thoughts and processes. To uh improving this. Um and then the last portion is the. The white and the yellow and the orange over on the other side of the screen there. Uh that is. Uh in the project, the white is where uh. Uh CID two NPH is going to be extending uh down from uh. The canal and kind of making that U shape back up to ninety-nine. Um and that, that's going to be uh connected by uh by industry. The leg that comes from fourteen oh five over to that little U-shaped uh piece. Uh goes through CCID one, which is TGS. And uh there's thought that they would be involved in uh building a portion of that as well. So the key is, as we've been talking about, is how do we separate industry from. Uh residential traffic along the Beach City area. Um you know, I think. Everybody, you know, everybody knew that there was an industry park out there, but uh you know, as you built houses and it grew residentially. It didn't seem like a huge amount of concern, it was just open fields for the most part. Um over the last ten years, uh we've just seen a escalation of growth and. You know, the traffic concerns. And like I mentioned earlier, the county doesn't have the ability to. Uh regulate that growth uh completely to stop it. We we can only say that. Uh it needs to be done uh, you know, legally and uh to the current standards. Uh the other concern I have is uh they have all of the uh right-of-way along twenty-three fifty-four. Uh pretty much from uh just south of development there on the. I don't know, what about a mile south of the canal, all the way down to the to the tip. And I I calculated several months ago that if text dot allowed, even at their. widest spacing of driveways that. Text up, that text out would allow most likely a hundred driveways uh tying into twenty-three fifty-four uh from industry. That's a bunch of trucks, that's a bunch of turns. Uh I'm sure they would have turn lanes and such like that, but. That's, you know, I've been working with county commissioners, county county commissioner's been working with us, we've been working with TGS to try to. Find ways of separating out um residential traffic from industry traffic. So that's what this picture is trying to show is, I've got the the frontage roads along uh ninety-nine. So if we could build something in coordination with TGS or with industry, including the sand pits. And get it uh up to uh the EW four bridge that text dot has agreed to do. We we talked about that, we convinced text dot to throw forty million dollars um at uh building the bridge. Uh there at EW four, uh that was initially left out of the ninety-nine project, so they're they're doing that. But uh how can we utilize that uh for improving safety for the residential traffic? So part of this is we have money for uh a project that's in there. You know, I've got two yellow lines, I think uh maybe one of those is uh buildable. But uh I kind of think maybe on the west side a little more, but right now we have an engineering uh group that's. That's studying this and they're trying to determine oh what route would be usable. And separate, help separate out uh traffic, industry versus uh residential. And that's, we're looking for a win-win solution there. If if it can't happen, then you know, then maybe we look at the orange line. That's uh would tie twenty-three fifty-four into ninety-nine um and build that section of EW four. If uh if we make that work out, but I mean honestly, there there are some issues there with the the sand pits. With uh some of the wetlands, uh there there's some pretty significant challenges on these um these projects. But we're, unless we study it, we don't know if we can, you know, if we can improve it. So. Uh they're in the process now and uh. You know, I'm I'm not sure, but uh I I think it's, it's definitely needed and it's worthwhile, the the process to uh. Try to move forward with something to improve safety. With that, I'll ask four questions.
Well, I want to just reiterate that the hope, the intention here, what you're talking about DW four and your yellow lines. Is to try to alleviate drive and truck traffic off of twenty-three fifty-four that would be mixing. With the residential traffic. It is problematic, but like you said, uh you know, uh part of Cedarport. They own seven miles of frontage along twenty-three fifty-four. And they got to access their property and we cannot stop them from accessing their property. But we are working with them and trying to find ways that we can, they can access their property. And minimize the mix between, you know, their industrial traffic and the residential traffic.
Okay, any other questions?
I I just, not a question, uh just comment, I just want to thank Corey for all his work and effort he's put into this, so. Uh I know this is never-ending and and I know he's put a lot of time and effort into this, so um I want to thank him for that.
Tommy, it's what I enjoy, I've been involved in highways a long time, so I I do appreciate the uh feedback. But uh it's uh it's, it's fun working on, I'm trying to solve uh problems, you just uh. You know, unfortunately, you always see the issues, uh if you don't do something, um it's it's kind of hard to say. You know, when something's going good, it's it's hard to show uh the benefit of uh maybe lives, lives saved by uh being proactive. So uh, but I do appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Uh with that, this is the the budget numbers uh that we came up with, with uh each of these projects. Uh that we talked about. And uh so the the extension is basically just a one-mile section of. Uh for two lanes over to thirty-one eighty from its current location. Uh the widening uh from its current four-lane section, which is just east of one forty-six over to ninety-nine. Uh I've got it six point two, uh Kilgore Drainage, um about one point three is needed for that addition. The old Needlepoint extension, uh four point six. Uh that would take it to ninety-nine and that's if we take on all of the cost for that. There is the crossing of the canal. Um and uh a pond that's in there that's going to be a little bit difficult. And uh. But uh anyway, like I said, I I really think that we need to uh go across with at least the right-of-way. Needlepoint uh overlay, talked about that, that's uh part of the uh realignment project to be able to uh complete the. The project and open it to traffic. And then we got the EW four frontage to CCID one at uh five point eight. So uh that's, that is just the extension to the south and that would be kind of uh. Down to, over the canal and uh just tying in where we'd be able to, maybe CCID one would tie into it. And uh pull their trucks north and the sand pits be able to utilize the route. Uh like I said, that's dependent upon if we use it on the east or the west side and kind of what they'd look like. And hopefully we have some better answers on that in uh a couple of months, so. All right, and with that, I will pass it off to others. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Corey. Corey, I'm sorry, I have a question for you.
Go ahead.
Uh I was muted, but yeah, back to that slide. I thought we were going to add the money in it to uh get the right-of-way, roll needle point to extend over to thirty-one eighty.
Yeah.
Yes, it's on there, it's that that opens up, it's on that slide, I know it's in the 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 document.
Okay, it's in the document, uh according to error, I thought it made the slide, but I don't see it, so.
I just copy what I was saying.
One point, one million or something like that?
Yes, it's part of the seal, the number.
It's in there, Billy.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? I get kind of what I. Corey's show was, the the reason he showed the north side was. I think the west side is in pretty good.
I think the west side is in pretty good shape on the north side I ten due to the partnership of the county. Mount Bellevue and text dot and the north south roads and east west roads there, but as you can see by his presentation. South of I ten is is really needs something done.
Okay. And I would say, so a big part of that is one forty six, once it gets to I ten, that traffic disperses a great deal. Um with all the commercial growth along one forty six, traveling from, you know, thirty one eighty. And back and forth there um. It's just, there's a huge need. Um and there is, I mean, my Bellevue's doing a pretty good job of extending roads uh and tying in. And of course, fourteen oh nine is really going to help, but yes, we, you know, uh the lines south of ten are things that aren't on the ground yet. But they need to be.
Okay, anything else on the on the road part of this? All right, if not, I'll turn it over back to Jeff.
Good afternoon, thank you for having me. I'm Jeff Chapman with P B K. We uh we were asked to give kind of a quick summary of the kind of the master plan that's been happening in the county. Uh starting on the the east side of Winnie, moving to the central and then in and up over here on the on the west side complex. And so as you all know, the the Sonya Arena was completed um earlier this year. And we're really excited about the completion of that project after all the the trials and tribulations of it. And in the memory of of Bill and Sonya, one of our a hundred year old members of your community. We uh recently completed the Hargraves Library. Uh once the COVID restrictions are lifted, it will it will be ready to open to the public. A beautiful facility that was finished by uh N T Construction um just last month.
And it should be open any day now.
And that'll be, that'll be exciting. We can get a an official grand opening on the calendar, Judge.
Yes.
The uh Anawak Park reconfiguration is underway. Uh we are currently one working on plans to bid the first field. That will allow the other three fields to remain and then uh when funds become available, we'll go back and clean up. Uh and re refurbish the other three fields and get them a little bit more proper north-south orientation as you see in this slide. Across the street will be.
Uh back to that one, Jeff, uh it is turf infills, correct, like we're looking at on the west?
Yes, sir, absolutely. And we'll have a better better picture of what that looks like later on.
Right.
Then we have the Anawak Library uh and Visitor Center. This is a very similar project to what you just saw in in Winnie. Uh with the the added vis visitor center and then you can see the the large parking lot that will be added that will be able to serve both the fields across the street. As well as the library and then uh there's room on that site for a soccer field as you can see. We're looking forward to getting started on on those projects with your county. Um so the history of the West Side Complex uh started with uh Mount Bellevue approaching the county to partner with them. Uh for them to expand their existing park, Enterprise Products expressed interest in purchasing McLeod Park because of uh connecting facilities. Waiting on Fish and Wildlife to approve that sale. These two events fostered the idea of of a central complex. To replace everything in McLeod Park, move the solid waste box site and road and bridge building over to one central complex. So as you can see here, here's that current uh Mount Bellevue uh park. Here's the uh the fir the second phase of expansion, which would go directly on your current box set road and bridge area. Um refurbish some softball fields and then here's phase three of that park. This is what McLeod Park looks like right now. You can see the four fields there, the storage building and the community center. And so we basically bring all of that together uh at the West Side Complex, eight fields, four hundred eighty five parking spaces for the fields and the community center. Uh the box site and road and bridge yard would actually be expanded in terms of their yard and capacities. And then there's a detention pond where we'll be putting some soccer fields. Um as well as partnering with one of the community groups for an indoor style uh soccer field you can see there next to the parking lot. As Judge mentioned, the the fields will be uh artificial turf infield with natural turf outfield. They will be lit, the bleachers will be concrete uh for durability. And that will be at both the large fields and the and the small fields. As you can see, there's uh four small little league fields. And then there are three larger fields and then there what we're calling a showcase field that could host uh any ages and these. Facilities will be built to help host multiple ages and also be baseball and softball ready. Here's a rendering of the community center. As Brian, uh Sheriff Hawthorne eloquently stated at the beginning of the meeting. That this would be storm ready, uh all of the H V A C will be inside, it will be on a generator, ready for post uh event. Uh ready center as well as a community center for the rest of the year, complete with full commercial kitchen for uh large events in your area. The road and bridge and Corey, feel free to chime in. Uh we'll have three bays, an oil pit bay, a future raid all ready lift. Uh several offices, a restroom for the workers as well as parking and service plus a much bigger yard than currently exists in Mount Bellevue. And then, of course, our box site, sixteen boxes, uh two offices and a and full service uh yard. For tire oil and whatever else to to replace what is currently look uh on the off of your drive in Mount Bellevue. Any questions about the project before we get into the budget?
Um any questions? You know, as you were going through it, I thought about something. Uh one of the reasons we need to go with the C O to get this started is we're. Any day now, we're going to be losing um McLeod Park fields along with that community center there that is well used.
So the budget we we showed last time, uh twenty two million uh six hundred ninety nine thousand dollars for the whole. Shebang. Uh we had mentioned that we were seeing some escalations and that in order, if we needed to delay a part of the project. Uh there would be some escalated costs. And so I went, we went, we've been in discussions all week with Brookstone. I just want to compliment Brookstone Construction. They have been with your county every step of the way, um every twist and turn in terms of trying to keep this price in line. And do whatever they can for your county and it's been a great partnership uh with them thus far and we hope to continue it to a successful completion of this project. That said, we do feel that delaying the project is going to to increase some costs. And so before I show you the next slide, I just want to explain uh the scenarios that we're looking at first. There's it there, the price of steel and lumber has escalated and so we are looking at some cost escalations over the year. We are now uh about four months after we bid this project and so if we extend another uh. Ninety days will be about seven months after bid um in July from a January bid. And so uh between and if you break the project into two pieces. You're looking at extended general conditions costs, the cost for the general contractor to have insurance, to have uh fences, trailers, rentals. Um so we're good, we'd be going from a twelve month project to a fifteen month project. And so there's a little bit of cost there and then finally subcontractor remobilizations. Whenever this was all one project. You're paying the sub to come out on site once, do their work and then leave, but now we'll be asking certain trades to get started, do their work. Finish up and then have to come back. And so between all of those three escalations, we believe there's. And again, these are not to exceed numbers. We're hoping to give some of this money back to you. But right now, because of the uncertain situation between all of the subs involved and the marketplace. We're looking at about a five hundred thousand dollar um escalation, no matter how you slice it with the delay. So just want to keep that in mind. So the first option we're bringing to you to for your consideration is a two-phase. Project where we would start with a box site, the road bridge and all of the necessary site work for six million dollars. We would come back ninety days, begin phase two, total of twenty three million two hundred ninety nine thousand dollars. Second option would be to do all of the box site, all of the road bridge and all of the site work, seven point five million. Come back ninety days, complete the balance, same in total. And then uh if you wanted to just delay everything ninety days. Start it all at once, we feel that you you could still lock in that same amount. So with that, I'll open up for questions. And oh, here here's a schedule slide with the new completion of construction date, moving from May one to August one, twenty twenty two.
That that, I mean, that's the complex, but I mean, y'all asking for do two different deals. Cause that's the twenty cent million with action for the forty seven million. I mean, we're, that's all the other project. Do you have a total schematic of all of it together?
Yes, the the total total bond amount is forty nine. And that that's for all the projects, all the road projects, right away acquisition and the side complex.
I mean, and and I know I've spoke with you on this, Sir Judge, and I mean, I would like to have seen the Anawak Complex put in there. And I know we're trying to stay within a budget. I mean, my my, I mean, trust me, I'm a hundred percent behind. The road projects on the west side that need to get done. I'm a hundred percent behind all the projects on there. I'd like to add a couple more projects on over on the east side of the river. Um my only drawbacks with it is. Funding mechanism. Um I think, I mean, that much money, I mean, voters need to have a say. I mean, I mean, I'm a taxpayer and a small business person in the county. And I mean, we just need to make sure that uh they have a voice in it. I understand that going out and getting it done and I understand that we're getting a cheap rate on the money, but we're we're. elected to be good stewards of the taxpayer funds and not that not that going the other way is not being the the best option. But I'm just saying, as a good steward of taxpayer funds, I mean, we need to give them the option to have a say on that amount of money. And especially, I would, like I said, I'd like to see some other projects on there, but I mean, they're not, so.
Well, if you look at this slide, they actually are on there. Um the nine, the nine point five million we're receiving from enterprise from Cloud Park. Uh will be earmarked to use for the Ford Anawak Park project, uh the library and the baseball complex, so.
Okay, I mean, that and that's the first time I seen that judge and I I appreciate that and I say I didn't know. But I mean, it still goes back to the funding mechanism and then and it and trust me, it's not that, I mean, I drive those roads and my my company just drive those roads. Every day and I know I see the congestion and the and the hazards that uh everybody deal with over there and it's spreading to the east side. And it's gonna be addressed, text dots got a lot to address and so do we as well, so I mean, that.
We did.
That's just my concerns on it.
Sure, and I appreciate that. Um and you you know, it's not that the public doesn't have a say because they do. Um you just like today, we had a couple of public comments and the process, you don't just approve the C O today. And and get the money tomorrow. Um in fact, I'm gonna let Aaron go through the timeline of um. The the certificate obligation, which is on the screen, so Aaron, give me that, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you, commissioners. Yeah, so it's a pretty simple process on timeline, you can kind of look through it here. Um so today. Is the uh the the big first step here is to issue the notice of intent. Then you'll see a lot of things going behind the background with their bond council. You know, we're gonna do some reviews and they'll send like a draft document to the S and P, our bond rating service. Um while that's happening too, it's gonna be in the paper, uh mail to look papers, Baytown Sun, Seabreeze, Hometown, Progress. All those and they'll have to go through their, you know, they have to be in there, I think, you know, every week for once a week, I think, is the. The rules on this one. You go down, you know, well, then after a few, after about May twenty seventh, you see we'll have our review with S and P. Our credit rating, we'll go through that. And while we're working on that, we'll get the um. They'll have um June seventh, that's when they'll do the sale, the bond. And then on June eighth, the Commissioners Court Regular Court Meeting, that's when uh we'll approve the order and award the sale of the bond.
If I can answer a question, if you don't mind, and and the judge, whoever can answer this here. I mean, I know it says. Uh award to be to the contractor, the contractor is good with awarding the bid like that and waiting for the money to be available or how do we do that?
Um let me get the judge, I've been kind of back and forth, you know, doing H R stuff and other stuff, so let me. So I know they were discussing some of the stuff, hold on, hold on a second, guys, I'm sorry.
And I I didn't mean to interrupt you.
I'm sorry, guys. Uh yeah, he stepped out. I'm I'm not sure what the latest was. They were working something out, maybe Jeff knows, but that's if not. And then just cause back in, I'll I'll ask him. Um but anyways, so you know, we on. On the seventh, June seventh, they'll sell the bonds and then the eighth, that's when court will award the bonds. And of course, from from until today, if y'all approve it, up until now, up up until that time, of course. There's a, you know, you know, uh the one mechanism for. Uh the public would be the petition that they can start up and it had to be like the registered voters of the county. And I don't recall the percentage, I think it's about five percent. Um that's the mechanism for that. So it's a pretty easy timeline, it's not too crazy. Um. So if you have any specific question about the about the timeline, just let me know. And also Judge Commissioner Gore, I don't recall if this changed or not, he was asking about the uh contractor holding the bid. Or if we were going to uh award parts of the project and to the funds to get in, I don't recall that conversation.
Yeah, that's that's one of the options when you decide today.
Okay.
And what would happen is you would use and and I would just said in the meeting um with myself and Aaron and the financial folks. You wouldn't want to use all of your reserve, uh hurricane season coming up um and and your bond ratings. But you you could use a portion of it. Um if you wanted to get started on the project, um especially the road, the road and bridge yard and box site. Use a portion of it and then you could repay your fund balance back once you get your C O's done.
Okay, I think that's it for me.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Aaron.
All right, so you see the options for you. Uh you got questions?
Judge, was Aaron going to, are we going to get to it where he goes over what this will, how it will affect our tax rates?
Yeah, okay, sure. We did it too, you go and do it again, so.
I don't think it's on the slide, but it's in the previous commissioner's report packet. Um. So it's gonna be a little different since there's those with the be a little bit different, but it's not, it won't be very much. Um so we showed two different op, well, three different options for a twenty year, twenty five or a thirty year uh term. Well, I'll say if you do the thirty year term, um you have for next year, for the the I N S rate. The projected increase would be point zero one eight, basically two cents. And the following year, he'll be about the same, about two cents. Um but if you look at on actually the schedule, do y'all have this?
We we do, I just wanted you to do it in case anybody was wanting to know what it is, I I do.
Okay, so, yeah, yeah, okay, so uh yeah, it's basically two cents for the next two years. And then, you know, it drops down. A couple of reasons why is our tax abatements are rolling back onto the tax roll. Increased certified valuations, of course, they're all estimates, but um you know.
Hey, Aaron.
Yes, sir.
So you know, what I'm getting out of this as well, uh prior to this meeting, looking at it, with the tax abatement uh rolling back on the tax. The county should see no tax increase is what I'm coming up. Does that sound correct, Aaron?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. I I think that we could definitely uh see no tax increase for doing this. Based on just the increased valuations, tax abatements rolling back on the tax roll. And and also, I uh you know, we don't really plan on doing really, really, not that I'm aware of, big projects for next year or the year after. For the general fund, so.
What's our estimated interest rate, would you think, Aaron?
Yeah, so based on the schedule here for next year, our current I N S rate.
No, I said interest rate.
Oh, interest rate, oh, um yeah, I saw that, I'm sorry. Um. Thing was like two point five, maybe. Let me see if I can find that real quick here.
One of the other things that was discussed, the auditor mentioned in the meeting, was the fact that instead of everybody right now paying for this, that those, all those new people that are coming into the county, the reason we're having to do some of these things help us pay for it over the next several years.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think the estimate interest rate is 2.4.
Historic low rates.
Did the the, does the experts expect that rate to hold for the next six, eight, nine months a year, or are they expecting it to creep back up? Or what's, has there been any talk on that?
Well, we haven't discussed anything about the interest rates in the next six, nine months.
What have you heard, Mel? Anything?
No, no, not really. But, you know, with inflation kicking in like it is with building costs and stuff and other things, I kind of expect they might start increasing. You know, I'm not the expert.
Yeah, if we could answer that, Commissioner, we would we would be experts.
All right, any other questions, Aaron?
Yeah, what would, if we did a countywide election, about what would that cost us?
You know, Commissioner, I don't, I was thinking about that today, but I, you know, I'm not really sure. And you, you know, of course, you have to pay for the people and working it. Right? So that's salaries and then overtime. That's probably the biggest cost I would assume. You know, I couldn't tell you how much the last election cost the county. But there are definitely some costs associated to doing some kind of election. I I just, I, you know, I don't think we've ever did one, so I don't know what that cost looked like. I would assume a big chunk of it would be paying for, you know, people work and having to work it.
All right, anything else for her? All right, thanks.
Hey, Judge. Something to think about, and I, because I know Heather's been on the phone all day long. If they end up, if you don't, if you're gonna do an election and you don't do it quick, they're gonna already have decertified. Remember, some of those bills that are are pending right now will have decertified all of your election equipment. If you don't make this happen while your election equipment's still good, if if you're gonna do an election and just, just something to think about.
Do you remember the number that she gave us to purchase all new election equipment? Was it?
Three, three quarters of a million.
Okay.
Wow.
Yeah, another unfunded mandate.
Yeah.
Something to think about.
You know, the, in it, I might mention those unfunded mandates that are put on by the state. You know, it forces you to have to do things like this to be able to do these type of projects. If we didn't have 10 million a year estimated unfunded mandates.
Yeah, Judge.
A whole lot of difference in what we're doing.
Judge, I was talking to you the other day, and I just wanted to be correct, and you said, Commissioner, you are correct. Two years in office, we're averaging about 10 million a year. That's I sure would like to have that $20 million. We probably wouldn't have that, the special call meeting, try to get these very important projects done here on the west side that are certainly long overdue.
Yes. We got two issues, one's going forward with the COs, and the other is awarding the bid on the West Side Complex. And you have options. Jeff, go back to those options on the.
Yes, sir. Option one, start the box site, road and bridge and partial site work right out of the gate, 6 million. Come back 90 days, complete the community, start the community center, the all eight fields and the remainder of the site work, total 23,299,000 dollars. Option two, start all of the site work, the box site, road and bridge, 7.5 million. Come back 90 days, start the community center, all eight fields. Same price at the end. And then 90 day delay, not to exceed, we feel the number will still hold. Apparently, talking to Brookstone, the long lead item in the in the project is the fields. Is what they estimate is taking the longest time to get up and running before y'all could play ball. And so that being the most costly portion of the project, that makes sense. It's also, when you delay it, you expose yourself to the the largest amount of risk in terms of escalation. And so we feel these numbers will hold, talking to Brookstone. Again, we we feel like this is, this is as high as it would get, but the numbers that we've got, the subs have all been been talking to about the situation. And but we're just kind of waiting on a decision at this point.
Okay, and so the, what the phase one road and bridge and box site would do, it would be moving those off of Eagle Drive behind the annex and allow the city of Mont Belvieu to move forward on phase two of their park project. And I'll tell you, on Tuesday evening, a five year old had a two ball game. And it took me 30 minutes just to get out of the park due to the traffic and everyone leaving the fields at that time. So there is a big need for Mont Belvieu to get started on theirs.
Judge, I don't think we got a choice regardless of whether we do a CO election, pass or fail or whatever. We have to do some of this work. Well, I mean, we have to do the road and bridge and the collection site also, right?
I agree. Yes.
I think we have to take care of our kids.
Replacing McLeod Park. You know, I guess the only option there, if we didn't do it, would be not to sell the project. I mean, we've already committed to do it, but you you know, if we sell it, we got to replace it and we got to re, at the very minimum, build a community building that has to be replaced. And I believe the ball fields have to be replaced too. It's part of the park agreement, the parks department, right?
It is for US Fish and Wildlife.
Yeah.
Or is it US Fish and Wildlife? Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna say, I don't think any of this is really a pie in the sky. Won't, this is all a need.
Correct.
I agree with you.
So. So where does, where does that 6 million come from?
That would come out of general fund reserves. Currently, we have about 22 million. So it would draw down that and be paid back out of CO.
Okay, that's a bad time to be doing that with hurricane season.
Yeah, we don't want to pull. Have to.
We have, we have, we don't have a choice to do that. I I can go on and on about the phone calls I've had today. And I think we need to put this out there and give the a public opportunity to respond. So I've had two conversations that wasn't 100% positive and a two that wasn't positive. They just had questions about what we was doing and what all the scope entailed. So all the rest of them have been 100% positive. So I don't know that there's that much negative response out there to this whole package. So to be honest with you.
The the vote today is not the final vote to do to CO. I mean, it's to move forward, start advertising it, posting it, and then it has to come back to the court right, once it's been aired in the public.
That's correct. What it would do would be put it out there, you do a notice of intent, which it says, to issue the combination tax and revenue bonds. Uh, excuse me, certificates of obligation. And then you won't vote on it until, I don't have that calendar in front of me, but it would be the first court in June. Yeah, Aaron said yes.
Okay, and I'm kind of like Commissioner Hammond, you know, the majority of the calls and stuff I've gotten on it, it's been positive. I did get two negative emails, but other than that, everything has been, I've had much more positive comments than negative on it.
Myself, Commissioner Combs, I talked to the mayor of Beach City yesterday and today. And a lot of phone calls saying, thank you, please get this done. A a lot of parents with kids and baseball fields and the fact that soccer fields is coming and and just very positive, Judge, and that they're saying long overdue. Thank you very much.
All right, on number one, approve a resolution authorizing publication issue combination tax and revenue certificates obligation. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, Your Honor.
First by Commissioner Hammond, second by Commissioner Combs, the right Billy. I got a motion in second. Any other questions? Needs to read. Let me tell you what that motion needs to read. The motions approve a resolution authorizing publication of notice of intention to issue combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation. Is that your motion second?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Hammond?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, I got a motion in second. Any other questions or comments? None of those in favor?
Aye.
Close. That was Commissioner Gore. Most curious. Number two, discussing set awarding bid on West Side Complex project. And you saw the options there. Jeff had them up just a minute ago.
Judge, if I could make one quick comment about the the options. It's important to remember that you will not pay a dollar of this money until the work is complete and approved through the pay application process. Judge asked us to do a quick analyzation about how much you would actually pay through hurricane season of the six or the 7.5 million that you're looking at. And so the worst case scenario of of what we are looking at, you probably by October would, even if you award the 7.5 million, you would probably only have to actually spend by October approximately 3 to 4 million of that, depending on the weather. And so it's just important to keep in mind that either one of those options, you're not paying all of that money right now. It is gonna sit in the same spot that it's at. It's just authorized. And so if there's a giant hurricane and it shuts our job down, it slows the pace at which they'll be able to build. And so it's just an important point in terms of of all that money being in your bank, so to speak. And the the, it won't all come out at once. It's not like it's it's one big check to the contractor. It will actually be a much slower process than that all the way through hurricane season.
Thank you, Jeff. That's a good point. All right, I have a motion on awarding bid on the West Side Complex project.
So move, Judge.
Which option, Mark? Option one, 6 million. Option two was 0.5 to all site work and road and bridge yard and by that.
The entire project, Judge.
Okay, so that would be option two, correct, Jeff?
Yes, sir.
Jeff, is that right?
Option two, move forward with 7.5 entire site work and 90 day delay for the remainder. That would be option two, correct? All of the site work.
Got a motion by Commissioner Tass in a second.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Hammond. Any other discussion?
Now, we're, this is going out of our reserves, I mean.
That will be dedicated money out of the reserves. Yes, sir.
Okay. And let me, okay.
You're gonna pull it down to about 15 million. Well, at some point.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we don't have to pull that in special account or anything like that, Judge, I mean, or.
It'll have to be, I don't know, Aaron can answer that question, that you set up an account, I'm sure. But it'll still be in, it'll it'll be part of the money will still be there. It'll just be dedicated for this project.
We're, we're, we're voting on this money that we already, we already have and that we're gonna use for this.
Right. Correct. Based on 2019, end of year fund balance, 19 and a half, Aaron corrected me. Do I keep him around? All right, I got a motion in second. Any other questions or comments here? None of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close.
I'm not saying no, Judge, just because, I mean, just.
Okay, got one nay vote, Commissioner Gore. Most curious. All right, we're gonna go to executive session at what time is? At 5:00, 5:02. How good be 5 o'clock already? 5:02 PM, 20.1, discussing set of personnel issues.
Can we get two minutes, Judge?
Yes, sir. Take a quick break and we'll come back into executive session. We need to get our attorney on with us anyway. Thank you, Jeff. We appreciate all the hard work.
You're very welcome. Look forward to a successful completion of this project.
Thank you. Is not available? Okay, you let Ashley in. All right. No action out of executive session on 20.1.